Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 15th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We appreciate those who were in attendance tonight. For those who were just arriving late and just tuning in, we just had a power outage for about 15 minutes, and it just came on about four minutes ago. So nerves are a little high about what to do, but we're glad that everyone's got things back up and running. We appreciate those folks working to get that back up. So anyway, we will call our meeting to order, and we will ask for the invocation led by Pastor Gary Clark of Lighthouse Gospel Church in Redville. And following that, we'll all turn and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And Colonel Richardson, could I ask you to give that to us? Folks, if you'd stand, please, if able.
Father, we come here today, God, just in awe of everything you do, what you do for us. Father, we come here tonight before this great group of men, God, not divided in unity, God, not Republicans, not Democrats, just people for this county of Rockingham. God, we just ask you, Lord, that you be with them as they guide us, as they try to lead us, God, as they try to direct us. But God, just as they do for us, God, I ask you, Lord, to lead, guide, and direct them. Let them make the choices, God, that are closely aligned with your will. Father, we want to thank you again for all the folks that have worked hard this weekend, God, to get our power grid back up and running. God, I'm for one and thankful for that. God, thank you for keeping them safe. And God, I just ask you, Lord, that you bless each and every one here. God, we love you, we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Aye to the flag and under the appropriate courtesy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that. Well, I'd ask the manager, in light of the severe weather we've had and with power interruptions, if he could give us a quick update on the situation in the county. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. I just got a text from Davis. He said that the power went back on. He asked to be on standby at the transformer until we're done with the beans. So I told him it would be hopefully about an hour, hour and a half, maybe, maybe less than that, maybe 30 minutes. But yes, so I called Davis and tried to get some information from him. He said that Duke Energy Crews in Rockingham County responded to the outages that began at 3:00 a.m. on Saturday, February 13th. Approximately 15 large transformers, 44 utility poles, and seven miles of distribution lines in the county were damaged. Duke Energy serves 47,000 customers in Rockingham County. At the peak, over 17,000 customers were without power. We now have around 5,700 customers without power. He is estimating the complete restoration by 9:00 p.m. tomorrow night. He was talking about his staffing out there, obviously, with the freezing rain and the temperatures, and they had several bucket trucks, as saturated as ground was, that they had sunk in the ground, so they had some issues with that. So they had to bring in specialized equipment to make the needed repairs in certain locations. More than 340 local linemen and damage assessors have worked since the storm's inception to restore power to the residents, and additional 700 linemen traveled in from other parts of North Carolina and South Carolina to work. So their work was really hard.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I know our board appreciates all the work that these line people, communication and power workers are doing. We appreciate that. All right, that being said, we've got an agenda that's been published, and are there any updates or changes to that agenda?
I'd ask that we add to the agenda as far as road abandonment. It's .1 miles of state road, 1243. No local name is assigned to that road. It's off of Silvania Road in the Hutsfield Township, and ask that that be added under the consent agenda as item G.
I would second the agenda as adjusted by Commissioner Berger.
Very good. Very good. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Very good. Agenda passed. If we work from a consent agenda as well, and this consent agenda is non-controversial items, they're basically just day-to-day government routine, and those items are listed, as you can see. If you have any questions on these items, you can speak with our county manager. He'll be glad to answer any questions. That being said, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda is approved. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. And let's see what we have tonight. We have no one signed up for public comment tonight, so that will bring us on to item number seven. This is a public hearing, and Timothy Mack will be presenting for us tonight. Mr. Mack? And the public hearing for the zoning request first.
I believe Carrie is able to zoom in and do the presentation part.
Very good.
So I'm going to be switching out the slides for her as she goes on. Carrie, are you available now?
There I am. I'm sorry, here I am.
Good evening, Carrie. Proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for -- Tim's going to be up there helping advance through the PowerPoint, and I'll be presenting. Pretty soon, Tim will be presenting. He's been presenting to the planning board and to the Workforce Council and making his way up there. So, Tim, if you'll put up the first slide. So our first zoning case is for a project right along Highway 220, a four acre parcel that's adjacent to an already commercially zoned parcel. This parcel is in the economic development land classification of the land use plan. Tim, you can go to the next slide. A little bit more detail about where this property is located. Again, it's the economic development land use class, and I'm unable to get a packet today because I haven't had Internet, and I don't know that you want me to read the narrative on the screen anyway, with the policies and objectives of the economic development land use class. Tim, you go to the next screen. So as you see, this property is located on 220. This property is in a contract for sale, and if -- I don't know if Mr. Biggs is there or not to represent the seller of this property, but that is -- the seller wishes to get this rezoned to a commercial use so that a buyer is able to use it for a variety of opportunities. Next slide. Better location where this property is. It doesn't have frontage on 220, but is right at the intersection there of Williams Road and 220. And actually, it may have some frontage when we see a more specific survey. Next slide. I think that was the last one. Okay, go back. Do you have any questions for me?
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
Yeah, I believe you can confirm for us that this property is just south of a property that we moved from residential to commercial about a year, year and a half ago. That was going to be for Skywalker.
Skywalker Roofing?
Right.
Yes, it is. Very close to there, on the opposite side of the highway and a little bit south.
Any questions, gentlemen? Anything else, Carrie?
That is all that I have.
Very good. That being said, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for comment on this. And we have signed up for the property. We have Mr. Jeff Biggs coming first. Jeff?
Hey, I'm Jeff Biggs, Jeff Biggs Realty, and I'm here on behalf of the Williams family. He's hired me to sell this four acres of land, and it's located just north of the 220-Williams Road intersection, and it's currently zoned residential/agricultural, and we want to try to get it rezoned to highway/commercial. And I do have a potential buyer here tonight, Mr. Torres, and if you have any questions about what's his future plans, I'm sure he'll be glad to answer those questions for you. Appreciate your consideration, and I'll be glad to answer any questions for you also. He does have about 345 foot of potential road frontage on 220 per the new survey in Anthony Bonde. Any questions for me?
Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Biggs? Thank you. Mr. Torres, are you here tonight?
Yes.
Very good. Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Lord Torres, General Manager of Rhino Sheds. Rhino Sheds is a junk factory. We manufacture sheds, wood barn sheds, and we do high-quality sheds. You've seen them all over, but you know, you would say that shed is a shed, but you know, we're trying to make a difference when you build a shed. We always -- we use high-quality fields, and you can see a lot of them, a lot of the shed manufacturers, some of them will build sheds and put them on the market.
Jennifer, I think he has handouts for us, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, some of the shed manufacturers or builders, you know, they just go and build them, but we try to suit all the requirements that the states, counties. So we got easy to do the wrong ones, you know, that ours may to place our sheds on several states, and they got a shield for those states. So the sheds, you know, we try to give the sheds built right, you know?
That's right. Say that. Thank you. Very good.
Best way to do it, build it right.
Amen. Do you need these back?
Yeah, we need them back, and if y'all guys need a coffee, I can always email at you guys, and I will provide it, coffee, you know?
Very good. Thank you for these plans. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and we build them on the shop and transporting with the special equipment. I guess you guys have seen those kind of equipment, you know, and we'll be displaying the sheds on the lot, you know? Like I told the other day, to the other session, sometimes we're going to have more, sometimes we'll have less. The taste of land is pretty good. I think it's some of the competitors down the road already, you know, and ours is not going to be worse than our competitor. That's what we say, but you know, they're good, but we do better.
That's right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Torres. We appreciate it. Guys, any questions? No.
I've got one question there. Mr. Torres?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure your sheds are remarkably good. Are you going to cover the entire four acres with sheds? It seems a lot of acreage for manufacturing of sheds.
No, sir. Parts of the sheds are, you know, it's going to be like outdoor items, like it all depends on the dealer, who's going to run it. Whoever runs it, you see them, you also always approach it to these sheds, and it all depends on him or her, you know? And outdoor furniture, some of these metal buildings, because everywhere you see the metal build, the wood barn, wood shed, you see the metal barn, metal shed. And then you might see U-Hauls, then you might see some outdoor furniture, and much of that depends on who's going to run it.
I totally accept that. What I'm interested in, to see if there are some plans in the work to sublet a portion of this four acres.
No, sir.
Very good. Commissioner Perdomo?
I have no question.
Well, that being said, we'll close the public hearing part. Gentlemen, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion. You ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve Case 2021-03, changing from residential agricultural to highway/commercial.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck to you. Very good. That takes us to item number eight, public hearing. Mr. Mack?
This is another rezoning request, the next parcel in the group of parcels that Carroll Properties is purchasing in order to create their corporate park. This is a less than acre parcel located just below the one that you last rezoned. It is located in the economic development land class, whose purposes are to accommodate and encourage new industrial/commercial uses. It's this lands in developed and urban areas where capital investments are expected. Next slide. So the red on the south side has already rezoned, the pink, sort of a pink outline with crosshatching is the area that's being requested for rezoning. It's an entire parcel that Carroll Properties was just able to acquire, and they're rezoning the corporate park in property by property as they acquire the properties. So this is why you see them more than once. Next slide. There again is the property. They've already purchased and rezoned everything else around there in that triangle, and the -- excuse me, item add to the agenda tonight actually abandons the road that you see there between this property and the previously zoned property just across from it.
To the west, Carrie?
No, if you put that up again -- or I can't find it, I just can't see it. The Silvania Road was rerouted down to 65. So Silvania Road used to come east toward 220, and it now comes straight down to make a 90-degree intersection with 65. Where Silvania Road used to be routed is what will be abandoned.
Okay, that's to the north of that property.
To the north of the property, yeah. The property is actually along this road.
All right, thank you.
There'll be -- a portion of that road is going to be left behind because there are one or two driveways that still require it for access. That will be -- that's carefully planned with surveys, and the property owners, they understand what's happening. We just have to name that last section of road.
Okay, very good.
That's all. You can leave it at that slide, and I suppose if there's questions.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing portion. Have we have a Mr. Leonard signed up to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. How you guys doing? Appreciate everybody's work on the weather and getting the power back, because I can personally experience. We were out of power for a few days, but sometimes the generators makes it fun to change things up a little bit. What she was referring to, the square crosshatched area, if you can go back a slide, I'll look into that.
I'll stand up there with it. I just need to test if that was heard.
Okay. So the crosshatched area, actually the property to the south and to the east and to the north, the larger tract, should all be purple. We've been before you about a few months ago.
Right.
We've zoned that. So just to clarify that, this piece we now own or are under contract to own, we're going to be starting a spec building on this site fairly soon and working with staff on the lands and so forth, so just here to answer any questions you might have.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we'll close the public hearing portion of this case. Thank you. Gentlemen, any discussion, any questions?
No, sir.
With that, we'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, Case 20-21-05, rezoned from residential agriculture to like industrial and to include statement and analysis.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you. And with that, we have Mr. Tate, Director of Engineering, to present tonight.
I've got one item for your consideration tonight, and it is a request for an waterline extension to property on Carlton Road. This project has 162 single-family lots. You can see that picture there. That parcel there is Kaloe Foods. The county already has a water and sewer system up to Kaloe Foods. It was paid for by some grant funding several years ago. There is the proposed route for the waterline extension. It's roughly 1,500 feet coming from our existing line on 220 and running up to that small triangle point there, which is where the property is for the subdivision. You have in your, I think in your packet, you have the return on investment form, and if you look at that, the cost of the extension is roughly $230,000. The payback for that is 4.25 years at 20 homes per year, per the developer, and if you factor in, they will also be hooking or tying into our wastewater system, and if you factor that into the equation, the payback drops to two and a quarter years for the utility service there. So this is, in staff's opinion, a very good project and very good investment of funds. My recommendation would be to, if the board approves it, to take those funds from Senator Berger's office funding, if that's okay with the board, and use that to pay for it. Why I said that last time, I got corrected, so that's why I said it this time.
I think what you're referring to is the money that came through the state budget.
Exactly. Yeah, I just wanted to give credit to the right person, so.
You don't want to get chewed out no more.
Yeah, that would be the recommendation from staff, if the board would consider that, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you all have. Mr. Leonard is still here, and this is part of their group's investment too or into the county.
Go ahead, Commissioner Travis.
Ronnie, as my understanding is, the developer is going to be adding the sewer line? We're not paying for that, right?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that. We're not paying.
It's just a waterline extension, is all.
Sounds good to me.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Commissioner Richardson?
Motion, second.
All right, gentlemen, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thanks, Ronnie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Tate, we appreciate it.
Now, as far as the funding that we did receive through the state budget, what do we have left? Do we know? Or can you get that for me tomorrow?
I can get you that. I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can get it for you. I'll give it to you guys.
Very good, gentlemen. That takes us to item 10, new business. Mr. Manager, any new business?
We don't have any new business, sir.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to say a big thank you to all our power line lineman workers in the county. You know, they're working hard to restore our power and our communication systems. I've been one of them out there working since 11:30 last night, so I understand where they're going through. Also, got a bunch of phone calls, kind of complaining, wishing, you know, Duke Power would do a little bit better job of trimming some trees back, but I think in the last couple of years, they've been doing a real good job. They just might not have got to your area, but I think if you let the county know, we can pass it on to Duke Power, and maybe we can start hitting some of these areas that really got hit hard during this ice storm. So I really appreciate all the workers out there. They've came a long ways the last couple of days. Please continue to check on your elderly, your disabled, you know, they might not have power, so please check on them. Let's take care of our neighbors, you know, they're our neighbors, so let's take care of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I make a plea for all the charities and public entities and individuals in the county that help us do something about the litter. I don't know why litter gets worse as the weather gets worse, but it's pretty bad out there, and we're trying to do what we can using some state funds and local funds. We want to improve the service from that we're getting out of the sheriff's department. May not be able to do that for six months or so, so plea to all the folks. And I want to take a moment to recognize our Health and Human Services, our sheriff's department, our local people within the administration, the county manager, everybody involved with getting the COVID vaccine out to the public here in Rockingham County has done an extraordinary job. I have had emails, phone calls, word of mouth, lots of very positive comments, and I think that speaks well of the people running that program. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Perdomo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to echo my colleagues' comments to all the first responders out there, the volunteer fire departments, law enforcement, all those folks that's been out there in the trees down across the road, take their chainsaw with them to work and go out there and cut trees and made roads accessible, and all the fine folks with Duke Energy and all their contractors out there working diligently in these adverse conditions, to say the least, to try to get power back on to the folks out there in our communities who definitely need the power, whether they're on oxygen or whatever the case may be, and also to all our citizens who took the time to go check on their neighbor to make sure, you know, contacted about neighbors bringing in neighbors, letting them sleep in the basement because they had power right up the street. So it's good to be in a community where that still takes place. Also, as Commissioner Richardson shared, I too received a lot of positive comments concerning the counties and the health director and all the logistics that's gone into this COVID-19 vaccination. You know, everybody I've talked to out in the community is taking time to call me or send me an email or just in passing about the send me an email or just in passing about the, how smooth it worked. And so the sheriff's department and anybody, the staff at the health department, county staff, anybody that had any involvement in making that such a smooth process, thank you. Job well done. And I know there's still a lot of work to be done, but you've got a, a great start and you're doing a magnificent job. Also, one thing I wanna share with you, we was talking about earlier, and I don't know if Commissioner Berger may gonna be addressing this, but I wanna throw a little plug in there for Code Red. I know I've got a Code Red announcement on my telephone about the adverse weather conditions. If you out in the Rockingham County, we have a reverse 911 system. It's real easy to sign up with. You can go online, there's a link on the county's website. I know we're gonna be pushing more information out there. I'm not gonna listen to that beeper. Because this is important. I think it's important that the folks out there sign up for this because it can, geographically, we can narrow that down to one location about a particular incident happening in your neighborhood. So you need to sign up, sign up for that. It is, it is not a, any burden, it's not a burden in any way. It's, it's simple to do. If you need help, I'm sure we can find somebody to help you do it. But it's a good way to get information out to the public. And so I encourage everybody, there again, it's called Code Red, and it's the reverse 911 system. And the last thing I wanna say, Mr. Chairman, is embedded in our consent agenda was a sheriff's department employee that retired with 30 years' service, Sergeant Bobby Richardson. I had the opportunity to work with him when I was with Eden, he was with the sheriff's department. Happy for him to have made it to the other side. And congratulate him on his retirement and job well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Berger?
Well, I think about the only thing left to say is how to sign up for Code Red. And I believe it's on our website. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Lance? So there's, there's a place on our website to sign up for Code Red. And is there any other avenue that citizens can take to sign up for Code Red?
There's, there's an app for if you have, I don't know which, I guess Androids or iPhones, but there's an application you get called Code Red. They can download that. And on that, you can put on there how many miles you wanna go out, from one to 25 to 30 miles out, depending on how much, how much you wanna get notified.
Okay.
Is that on the website?
Uh, no, you have to download that on your phone.
Okay. That's, I believe that's everything.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, everyone has covered everything. Again, please check on your relatives, stay warm, be a good neighbor. And I spoke with several folks over the weekend who were actually volunteering. They would get out in their truck and they'd go cut trees and help their neighbors. And that's the wonderful thing about living in Rockingham County is that we do have neighbors that care. We appreciate that. So thank you, volunteers. Mr. Manager, do you have something?
Just one, two things. One is on the vaccine, if, if you could just make sure that your constituents out there know that we could do as many vaccines as we, as we get in. We only get in 1,000 per week, and that's not under the county's control. And I know that we've, now we've made a third to be on phone and two thirds online, and they go quickly, within 10 minutes online, and then the ones on the phone about an hour. But they're slowly starting to slow down a little bit. But anyways, make sure that they know that it is out of our control. If they need to contact anybody, they, they probably need to refer to the state on that.
And that'd be the governor's office as far as controller. But when you say we get 1,000, is that the county health department or?
It's just, it's county health department. And we do get more, I think, Carolina, some of the pharmacies get it some, and the hospitals get a little bit as well. That's just the county public health department. And the last thing I wanted to mention is we're looking at going to, right now it's been drive-through, it's been going great. We're gonna test, test drive. The RCC, we're working with the community college and their gymnasium to roll out a, a clinic there, see how that works, so it's all inside. It's trial and error. I know that the folks that are out there under the tents, it gets pretty cold out there. So we have worked out an arrangement with RCC to be able to utilize their gymnasium. So eventually, we'll start going to that, particularly when we hit phase three.
Very good.
You, you mentioned something as far as the tents. I know the testing site that was run by the state, they refused to work anytime it was a little cloudy.
Yeah, it was closed today.
Okay. And has anything improved as far as that goes?
No, sir, not to my knowledge. But I were director of public health, and he's shaking his head no.
Okay. Still working on that, I guess. And that's, that's the state.
That's the state, not the county.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And yeah, Mr. Wright, yeah, I'd like to say I do appreciate it much as everyone else. We've gotten several folks appreciative. They said, once we got an appointment, things went great. And again, we know why we can't get appointments, because we're not getting the vaccine that we need. So we appreciate your efforts of your department. Thank you very much. Folks, with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.